Submission, a big one at local schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What call, Jeremy?
Mr. Crowell?
Here.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
And just for the record, Mr. Fuji and Mrs. Lee are not able to be present tonight.
Brings us to item six, the minutes. It's recommended the board approve the minutes of June 17 and June 30 regularly scheduled board meetings. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Thank you, Sheri. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Doug. Any comments or feedback on the minutes?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
That brings us to the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. I'd like to start. I gave you a couple of handouts. The first one has the back to school dates. This is posted on our social media and Schoology. It's also coming out in the Eagle Examiner, which just went to press last night. A few things just wanted to point out. We are doing, as I've mentioned before, the staggered start again. Got a lot of really good feedback on teachers being able to be with small groups of students that first week. At our lower levels, it lets them get all the assessments done where the teacher can do them. And then also gives them an opportunity just to get to know each other in a small group. So we will be doing that again. That was kind of a positive thing that came out of last year's craziness. And then all students will be attending on that first Monday, August 23rd. Couple other dates there to point out. We are doing Eagles First Flight, which is our freshman orientation. It's also an opportunity for new students to the high school who've moved in to come to orientation as well. That'll be on Tuesday, August 17th. Anyone impacted by that, additional emails or additional details will be sent out in the next week or so. And we do provide transportation for that. So it's kind of a trial run for that as well for the freshmen. And then we've gotten a lot of positive feedback that meet and greet is back. We weren't able to do that last year for obvious reasons. We did two years ago, stretch it. It used to be an hour. We made it two hours as we've grown. We found that it's very, very crowded in the hallways in an hour. So by pushing it to two hours the year prior, got a lot of positive feedback on how much easier it was to get in and out. And so have that staggered throughout the day by last name so that we can hopefully help with the traffic there. But again, that's all out. We have started to get calls on, you know, who's my kid's teacher? And when are class lists going to be posted? We never post those until the week before school. So we're still wrapping up some hiring and working on all those moving parts. So please be patient for that. I'm glad everybody's excited, but we're not quite ready to post all that. Again, that information's out. We come in in different forms to you. The other thing that I gave board members is, this just came out today from, as you know, Booker and Eckler are attorneys. I've also seen it out from another law firm that I get updates from, pretty similar information. But just wanted to make you aware, I know we've talked about, most of the schools as we talk are planning on a regular start to the year with optional masks recommended for those who aren't vaccinated, certainly welcome but not required. And our health department in those conversations has been on board with that. They've also talked about that case numbers are very low in Delaware County right now, which is good news. But this came out and it's basically saying that if you didn't see, the House Bill 244 was signed into law yesterday. It'll be effective in October. But it's essentially saying that involves us that you may not discriminate, public schools may not discriminate against an individual who's not received a vaccine, including by requiring the individual to engage in or refrain from engaging activities or precautions that differ from the activities or precautions of an individual who has received such a vaccine. So essentially what that means for us is the health department can't come in and say, Jeremy doesn't have a vaccine and he's exposed to the virus, he's quarantined, but Doug does have a vaccine, he was exposed, he doesn't have to quarantine. So what does this mean for us right now in Delaware County? I don't have an answer on that, but I just wanted to make you aware, this just came out today. We will certainly keep you updated and you can look through that. I'm happy to answer any questions or attempt to answer any questions, as I said. We have new map with the health department on this yet. It just came out.
So the health department can't require anyone to?
Not within a school setting unless we make everybody quarantine. So basically the point is you can't treat people differently if they have a vaccine or not. That's the point of this law.
But it's for somebody who's exposed, not somebody who's like test positive.
Correct. Or you also, now, we have not, nor have I heard this board express an interest in this, but some districts do utilize testing to come back, you know, earlier. And so you can't have somebody, make somebody take a test and not make somebody else take a test. You can't allow or deny participation based on that.
I'm just thinking, even outside of the COVID setting, like a few years ago, my daughter had the booster cough that was going around, you know, was required to stay home from school for a certain period of time. But that's because she doesn't?
Yes, that's isolation versus quarantine. So keep in mind that the difference is isolation is if you actually have a positive result of a communicable disease and quarantine is if you're exposed. I'm sure I'll have more of an update as we continue to talk through this with my different meetings that I have. But again, just got this today, caught up to press, wanted to make sure you had it. So if you've got any questions or heard things, we don't know much more than what's in this article. The other piece in here, which I've not heard this board express a desire to do either, is that you cannot require individuals to receive vaccines that are not FDA approved. And I've not, again, heard any indication of that anyway, but I just wanted to make you aware again, if you heard things, that that is part of this legislation as well.
Are you planning on posting this on the website for the general public?
I wasn't planning on it because we're not doing anything in here that contradicts it anyway, especially until I know anything more about it. What I'm planning on posting is what our protocols are going to be going back to school, which for right now was basically masks are optional. I will tell you that in here, they advise that districts look at if people who are not vaccinated, which is obviously all children under 12, if they can't be treated differently, then do you go back to masking everybody? Which is not my recommendation, I'm just telling you what's in here. But I don't personally see where this is our place to post this type of information. I'm just trying to share with the board as we move forward, if things change because of it. Right now, I don't see where it changes anything that we've planned on.
I've had conversations with multiple people and I think this would resolve some of their questions. I don't, I can't speak for the other board members.
So in our paper that's coming out, I've put in there, in addition to these dates, that we're planning on a normal start to the year, basically what I just said earlier that we've talked about multiple times, that masks will be recommended for unvaccinated and welcome, but certainly optional, not required. So that's the language in there, but then we always add, you know, that obviously it's subject to change. If requirements that we have to follow change. But right now, we're not seeing anything that it's pretty much left up to the local if we want to require them. This is just a change in quarantining.
Well, many of those questions are people worried about their, the unvaccinated being required to wear a mask, which this is saying we can't do.
No, it's not saying that. So this is saying you can't treat them differently.
Correct.
So we could say, everybody has to wear a mask or no one has to wear a mask. And what, again, what I've put out yesterday and it's going in the newsletter, what we've talked about is we're not requiring anyone to wear a mask. It's just recommended for those that aren't vaccinated. So that's where that comes in.
I guess another way of looking at it. If I get another contact, is there any problem with disseminating this information?
I just don't know that it's our place to put like the lawyer's interpretation of the bill that's signed at this point. Like I would like to know more about, like just throwing it out there without any more contacts on our end. I'm not personally comfortable with. But if you want to share it, it's public information. I just think it creates confusion if we're not changing anything from it.
So I guess to that point, and I guess this was an assumption before walking in today, so I'll just check my assumptions. It seemed like last year, we looked at our local county health department as the primary resource for knowledge and advice and legal requirements for dealing with the situation. And we've kind of made our own choices where we had the opportunity that we thought made sense. Is that still the game plan administration wise?
So yes, and if you look in here, it specifically references, it doesn't take away, here, I think it was in this article, might have been in the other one. Must have been in the other one, I read from the other legal firm, that it doesn't change their certain health authority rights under whatever revised codes. It's kind of confusing. The part I'm mostly confused on is we don't quarantine people, they do. But this is saying, public schools may not treat people differently. So where I feel like I need more clarification, and again, this just came out today, is can the health department still come in and quarantine people? Because we're not the ones that quarantine people anyway.
Well, I guess that's kind of the root of my question is, we, to my knowledge, we never had the desire last year as a district to decide who was quarantined and who wasn't.
Right.
That was the health department.
Correct.
I don't, I've never heard any expression of a desire to change that approach. So I guess that was one of the questions in the back of my mind then is, we've never actually quarantined anyone as a school district, the health department does. So there may be more legal action based on whatever state legislator gets excited about something to perhaps prevent the health department from doing that. But as of today, that's a health department choice.
Correct.
And we as a school district, as my understanding in terms of how your administration's taken it, had no desire to get in the public health administration business, correct?
Correct. I have no medical degrees, nor do I care to obtain any. So yeah, just, I think there will be more to come from this, you know, as you just said. So I will keep you posted as things become more clear, hopefully, as we move closer to the, a month from now when we're starting school. So we've about, kids come back on the 18th, so just over a month to figure all this out. But again, I would just reiterate that our intention with the numbers and our health department talked about, the numbers are the lowest they've been since this first started in Delaware County. I know there's a lot of talk about that Delta variant. They've said they've not really seen that much. It's mostly the Alpha variant in Delaware County right now. But again, overall, the numbers are really low. So we'll continue to talk with them and if anything changes or their interpretation of this is different or we hear something different, I'll let you know. I think that is all that I have in that section and I'll turn it over to Doug at this point then for the construction update.
Good evening. So again, these are the three monthly reports you've seen for quite some time now. And I'm going to start with the fun one, the one with the three images at the top of the pile that was to all of your left, I believe. And I opted to highlight all the athletic things just to be consistent tonight, just to share. So I usually highlight a few things to point out to you. Under site worth work in athletics, we may have talked about this before, but the stadium framing is complete. The home stands are up. I know some of the board members have actually been over there and kind of looked from afar. Press box is installed. So that's the image you can see behind all that text if you look a little closer. The home stands are not up yet. They're a little ways out, just to share. In August, what's happening there in athletics, I know as a baseball fan on the board, so the dugouts are actually up in terms of masonry. And then the roof framing and enclosing them happens next month. So actually, all four are up, the two softball and the two baseball, and I was just there today. You can see them all. The masonry's all up for those. Kind of fun and exciting to see. Tennis courts also start next month. Elementary, there's not a whole lot happening there, of course, because essentially we're done. I will share, we did just do what's called the 11-month walkthrough. And you do that prior to the one year of the first year warranty expiry. So we did that a little early, but we're still tracking things. So we're still eligible to inform them so if something occur between now and I believe it's August, I'll get it wrong, like August 18th roughly was our start of the warranty date, just to share for the elementary. Under there, you see I highlighted the central energy plant will be operational for the high school. So the central energy plant already works. We already have heat and AC, but it's essentially making it fully operational as the high school is tied to it. Under the high school, just a couple of things to share, and that's the image there you see under the high school. That's why I highlighted, there's a courtyard next to the cafeteria. That's the courtyard you see in that image. So it's just highlighting, we're working on that and it's starting to come to fruition. You can see some of the glass that encloses the building, looking out to it. You can see the slab there. So a lot of things are starting to come together if you were to walk the building. And then keeping the sports analogy, under August, we're going to be doing the wood floor starting next month. So gym, actually, if you walked in there now, you start to see speakers hung. It's all been painted. It's really taking shape now, just waiting. It's kind of being a staging area for the rest of the building is what's happening. Till we bring the wood in and get that ready to roll. So I'll stop there in terms of the buildings. Any questions on the buildings themselves for that project? Okay. The next report, I didn't highlight anything because nothing's really changed. It's a single page. Again, it's Gilbain's contingency. That's our money. They can use it with our right, our approval, but it's part of their GMP contract. They're still tracking negative. I see no time or opportunity that they will go to the plus. So again, that's the risk of CM at risk. There's a couple of those gentlemen here that will talk about GMP 6 in a second, but that unfortunately is their risk to manage at this point. Last document is our contingency. It's multiple pages, about six. I would just, right now, all I do is ask you to look on the last page and see where we stand in terms of our unencumbered and/or unanticipated encumbered. So that's kind of worst case, if you will, where we are as of late last week. We were at 123,806 left. We're getting tight. We're kind of continuing to manage, continue to track and try and do everything we can to eke that money out to the end of the job. But again, I'll say this is worst case. A lot of these things, as they roll into change orders, they're usually less, some are more. Again, we'll see a lot of more E as an estimate. As you go down, the white spaces are the ones we haven't agreed to a price or come to resolution yet. We're either waiting for a price or we're waiting for a supplier, some information, or we're discussing the price and not happy with the price. So that's what all the white ones are. Those have not come to fruition. They're predominantly on the last page. So again, we're down to 123,806 in terms of original contingency, just to remind you, which was approximately 2.4 million. Any questions on that? All right, I'll be back with Gilbain when we talk about the resolution for GMP 6. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. All I have tonight. Thank you.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Let's do it.
Okay. Just going through the final month of our fiscal year. As we've been sharing over the last year, that we were starting to see some, we were seeing underogen expenditures, overage in revenues, both are positive things. A lot goes into that, partly the estimating on our income tax for the revenue side, getting some of our state funding back that had been cut in May. And then several of the workers' compensation payments was kind of what led to the positive variance in our revenues. And then expenditures, we did come in under. And a lot, many of those were due to being able to offset some expenses from federal funds as well as just kind of watching our staffing as we went in, not knowing what the year was going to look at, look like. And then some of those positions that we had planned on, we didn't end up actually filling based on needs. So all in all, we ended the year positive and pleased with where we came out. Any questions?
Thanks, sir. That brings us to item nine, which is selected board policy in 9-1. It's recommended the board adopt the following policy revisions slash rescindings. And we've got item 13-10, Employment of the Treasurer for revision, as well as 13-40, non-reemployment of the treasurer, and 87-40, which could be a rescind. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Sheri, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Doug.
You will recall from our first meeting in June that we passed a resolution to have individuals that are normally covered by a bond to be able to be covered under our insurance policy for faithful performance. And we did approve that, and this is now just the second reading to get the policies in place procedurally along with what was approved with the resolution.
Any questions for Jeremy?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item 9-2, the first reading of the following board policy revisions. There's a laundry list there. Let me speak to this.
Yes, hopefully you got the email that Mark sent out on Monday with these. This goes back to the rush Title IX legislation that was approved last year and Policy 2266, that was the new one. And Mark talked to you at that point about, Neola was telling us there would be other revisions that would need to happen to align to that. Of course, there's talk that that all may change anyway, but in the meantime, we had some misalignment, which we knew. And so now the base policy here is 50 by 17, that last one listed, which is anti-harassment. And then everything else listed there is basically things that refer back or relate to that policy and aligning them to that 2266 new policy on Title IX. And I would tell you, I can take questions back and research them. I don't know if I can answer any right now. If anybody has any, I'd be happy to relay those. And again, this is a first reading, so if you do, we have until August 12th it'll be on for your approval. Or typically, we put them on the evening meetings or the August 12th.
So we got a little time to read through?
Little time if you have questions, yeah.
Then you must cycle those to Mark directly. Item 10, Board Members' Items of Interest. Doug, do you have anything for us?
Nope.
Sheri, how about you?
Just a couple of things. I, Berkshire Township is kind of potentially starting some activity. There's been some zoning meetings lately, and so I've been attending those, just kind of keeping an eye on what's going on. There's a few projects that potentially could happen that are in our district. So just keeping an eye on that activity. And then just in regard to the Fourth of July Parade, I just wanted to say that it was really great to see, you know, the band, cheerleaders, and student athletes representing our district out in the parade. And as well as, you know, hearing feedback from community members of, you know, appreciation for the ability to, you know, use the school property for staging the parade and the fireworks and everything that evening. So, thank you to all involved in that.
That's it? And actually, I was just going to do something similar with the Civic Association. I was remarking to a couple of folks just how good it felt to actually kind of get together as a community again. I mean, I felt like during the school year, we tried to do that where we could, but we had some limitations related to that. So it was nice to be able, whether it's parade, fireworks, or some of the other events going on, get back together again. So our Civic Association does an amazing job, puts a lot of hours into making that happen and get everything organized for that to occur. So just wanted to give a hat tip to them and thank them for all their efforts. Which brings us to item 11, which is public participation. So this is a meeting in the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered a public community meeting. The time for public participation during the meeting is indicated in the agenda. Please reference the criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. And Jeremy, I think you have the submission.
I do. Ms. Annette McMurray, if you'd like to come up.
Do I need to read my address this time since it's on the piece of paper?
I have it, so I think you're good.
Sweet. All right. So, good evening, everyone. I just really wanted to follow up on a couple of the things that were talked about at the last board meeting. I think you guys were meeting last month at the end of the month for your retreat and potentially going to talk about the CRT as one of the topics. And I just wondered if that was dove into at all or if there was anything to report on that.
No, at the end of the month.
End of this month, July. Ah, I was thinking June, okay.
And again, it's, and I'm, we're not supposed to respond on this. It's not going to be, oh, here's the answer. It's a very complex topic. And it's going to be dialogue about just the process to discuss it.
Awesome. Thanks, Angie. So yeah, that's really about it. I just wanted to see, for some reason, I had in my head June. It's just going too fast. All right. Thanks, guys.
We'll be back to school before we know it.
I know, Sheri.
Jeremy, did you have any other?
I think we, I have seen from the audience that I think we're good.
All right. So that was for, we're scheduled. We also offer the opportunity, unscheduled nature, for three minutes, to comment if anyone else here didn't turn in a piece of paper, has a comment. Okay, thank you. That brings us to item 12, item 12-1. It's recommended the board approve the resolution authorizing the lease purchase of four buses and authorizing the lease purchase agreement. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Thank you, Sheri. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
So as part of our capital planning, we have had four buses each year. We executed that a little bit later last year, again, not knowing if we were going to need them, but did see at the end of the year. We are hearing, or I am hearing from our transportation department, that there is definitely going to be a need. There's about 120-day lead time on buses. So that's why it's important to start now and get ordering these so we can have those, especially for spring when sometimes the transportation for the normal school day as well as activities can really pick up. So it does fit within what we were planning, the lease that we are looking at within our capital planning that we had looked at for this year and budgeted for, so.
So I remember from one of my very first board meetings a few follicles ago, that if I remember correctly, the oldest bus in circulation at that time, I believe, was 27 years old, which was, I'm not asking you to confirm that. I'm going off of my recollection. And then I know we've kind of made an effort to try to concentrate and work that rotation out a little bit.
That's correct.
And I know in the discussions with, I know you're usually working with Ron and Mark and everything on that, but do you have a sense of kind of lifetime of the fleet and kind of how that's working right now? Maybe just a high level discussion of how I'm managing that?
So...
I don't need the exact date of these buses, but I'm just kind of curious how that's going in terms of that process.
Going from memory, I think we still have some that are in the 14 to 16-year range, which is still starting to get fairly old for buses. But we have definitely been able to bring the average life down. I would say that we're probably more in an average life of seven to eight years. What we are, that sweet spot we're trying to hit is to try to have a cycle of being able to have more, a little bit younger life even than what we have now and looking at being able to hopefully retire buses in more of the 10 to 12-year range before we get to that mission critical and we have to because they're rusting out. So that's kind of what we're trying to get into. And with that also, you have, as we grow, 100 kids or a little over 100 kids every year, we're looking at needing to add buses too. So the four buses is generally about a two-retire, so we're getting rid of two buses and then adding two buses for the four, if that makes sense.
And I did pull up your beautifully coded spreadsheet, and it looks like we have nine that are 11 years or older, or 11 to 15 years, and then we have five that are in that 16 and up.
Just a curious, awesome question. One of my first meetings, I remember I'm falling over here in that number.
Yeah, we have been able to bring the age of them down significantly over the last several years.
Are these four buses natural gas or diesel?
We're looking at natural gas again. What we have found is right now, the price of fuel is cheaper as well as less oil goes into them. They're cleaner for our kids. The oil filters are a little cheaper. So we're seeing some maintenance savings by doing that, as well as they just, they're cleaner.
Are there any grants like there were the last time?
Unfortunately, not right now. The, we actually just used the last two buses worth on the last ones. We continue to watch for them, though. Other questions?
No, we're good.
Okay.
I was just a little hard to hear, so I was just...
No, I was just laughing. You give Doug a headset and all of a sudden...
No, I was just laughing. You give Doug a headset, and all of a sudden...
Oh, it's not even him, and I'm hearing it remotely.
I'm just teasing. Sorry about that. Jeremy, I think we're good when you're ready.
Okay. Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item twelve two, it's recommended the Board approve the resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the sixth amended amendment to the CMR agreement with Gilbane Company in the form of GMP number six. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks Sherri, is there a second? I'll second it.
Okay, I'm gonna lead off, and then I'll bring Mr. Chad Stevers up from Gilbane. So, it says in the resolution, this is a GMP oh six, this is two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and two dollars. Again, this is that additional entry drive that was discussed several months back. Now, we've already hired the architect, hence that's why we have drawings, we've already gone to the village, received approval from them. Just to remind you, this is a, essentially a second public or front-of-the-house drive. It is designed to incorporate everything in the original master plan, so expand future expansions of parking, a building if we ever wanted it in the southeast corner of the site, kind of south of the football stadium, so it does fit in with the master plan in terms of retaining space for both parking in that building. And with that, I'm gonna bring Chad up. Similar to what we've done before, if you remember, Mr. Sewell would pass out kind of the further breakdown of the cost. I will share in terms of how they broke, the numbers they gave me originally, that I shared, they have further breakdowns. So part of the differential in their numbers that they gave me originally is how they've chosen to bid it, and or how their subs have broken the cost down. So they've gone a little more to like, what I would say, in the weeds. So the cost he's gonna hand out, or I can hand out, will be a little bit different breakdown than the one you got a few days ago.
Yeah, so what he's passing out is, and what we're asking you to approve tonight, is the, it's our GMP six for, for the project, which is, like you said, they added access drive, which for us, they, they're, it's labeled as Bulletin three thirty-six, so it got issued as a bulletin. The drawings have been submitted to the village, and I know you guys have probably all seen them, and there's been a few iterations, as Doug said, to that plan. So what's in this breakdown is obviously some earthwork associated with bringing that up. It's, it's a, it crosses an area that's got quite a bit of elevation change out there, and a drainage swale that's, that flows from the east, the farmer's field, to the west, to our detention pond. So the road goes across that, that's why there's some head wall structures, and eighty-eight foot of concrete reinforced pipe that'll run under the road. And then, obviously, the asphalt and stone associated with roadway. The section out at the road, I don't know if you all have the drawings or not, but there's a, there's a pretty good sized section out at the road, or out Miller Drive, that has to be nine inches of asphalt. It's built to roadway profiles, so it's, it's eight inches of stone and nine inches of actual asphalt, which is, you know, three times as thick as what you would have on a typical, you know, school driveway or, or parking lot. So that's all in there. There's also some handicap ramps out there where the existing asphalt path crosses this new road. So it's got the dimples for accessibility, so if someone was walking down, they could know that they're coming up on a, on an actual road crossing. And then it also has light poles and the conduits and, and wire associated with having three light poles along the east side running north to south along this new roadway. And then, the center section is the, you know, markups for insurances and bond, bringing it to a total of two twenty-three one oh two.
Any questions on the...
Any questions about what's in it?
The eight inch and nine inch for the asphalt and stone at the road pro, profile? Why is it gonna be so deep?
That's a, is that a village standard, or...
It's driven by the village, because they're treating us like a curb cut on a public road, is why.
It's not the whole...
But it's not a public road.
Well, we've designed the, the east-west drive, a road that we own now as a public road, and granted them an easement, so they're treating the curb cut as a public road. Also in terms of the width of it, the angles, in terms of the in-out, et cetera, they're treating it, they, they've asked us to design it as if it's coming out to a road sometime in the future, so that's why we did what we did. So yes, there is a premium for that, as...
Yeah, it's significant.
Yes, it is. That, along with, you might recall, there was some discussion about the current, what I'll call, front-of-the-house entrance drive by the illuminated sign, and we don't have a dedicated left or right exit lane, we only have one. We've also gone with a dedicated left and right with this additional drive, so that added a little more cost also from the numbers you originally saw. So we have a dedicated left and right, we widened it a little bit more.
Thirty-six feet?
I can't remember at the top of my head.
Jeff says yes.
Overall, it skinnies down to twenty-four, once it's just two lanes.
Yeah, just out at the road, you've got enough room for an in and two out.
We actually flare the, the angle of it, the radius of it, two more, so it'll accept buses or even larger vehicles, because we're finding at the current drive, even though we meet standard, we're a little tight at some of our current drives. So we've actually added a little bit of pavement to be even wider at this drive in terms of the radius for turning in and out. And as Mr. Stever says, everything else that matches the same profile as the rest of drives, in terms of lighting, pavement profile, width, et cetera.
Signage, signage and striping.
So, let's taste and smell what's like the rest of the drives, if you will, is the easy answer. And same, it's just, 'cause you walk through it, all the percentages in the middle of his breakdown, all those are contractual, they don't set those, those are preset in the original contracts of their bond, their, their percentage for contingency and all that is preset by the original contract. So it's the same on every GMP contract, just to share, those are prescribed.
I asked Doug if I could increase something, and he said no.
That's not exactly why.
So this drive will go back and tie into the, you know, the, there's, there's asphalt back at the athletics area, it'd be the southwest corner of the track, and where you're coming into the south side of the west stands. This has got a pretty nice transition to that existing asphalt that's already in the contract.
So now that was a lot of info, and we're asking you to approve it in this one reading. What questions do you have? I know Mr. Crowe had asked a few that I answered earlier, or some today, actually. They had to do a percent, some of he just received right before the meeting, so that all of you, in terms of quantities, was the question he asked.
Yeah, I tried to track down some of the, some of the quantities that you'd asked for, so that, those, that stuff came from me, so if you got other questions or more questions, I can try to track that stuff down for you.
Anything else provided more than what you asked for, but just trying to answer the questions? Appreciate it. Okay.
No, I think all the questions I had were answered by this.
Well, I just got all the information before the meeting. Take a little bit to review it, I would think. I don't have any right now. I would move that we table.
What would be the impact for you to schedule, as if we were to table it till first of August?
Well, one obstacle is the, the pricing for the lights. We gotta release them by the end of the day tomorrow or the next day?
Yeah.
Or it's subject to a price increase. How much? I don't know.
Twenty percent.
What is it?
Twenty percent.
So twenty percent for the, for the lighting. And that's just on the poles, I don't think that's on the entire electrical number. That's one impact. The other impact, really, I don't, I don't know. I mean, these guys may or may not hold their numbers. This is a pretty crazy time. The suppliers are not guaranteeing numbers for very long. Could we still get it done by November thirtieth? That's what we're committed to in here, is being done with this work at the same time we're done with the stadium and the high school, which is November thirtieth. If we table this for a month, could we still do that? You know, maybe, but the, we're wanting to get, wanna, wanna get it started while we got folks there that can do it, and we don't lose slots. So, I know you just got this info, so I'm not trying to hold a gun to your head and tell you to approve it tonight, but the sooner the better for us.
Thank you.
We've, for what it's worth, we've already gone back and forth, vetting the number with them, they just go, try and make something beyond what we currently show. The other risk, as you kind of pointed out, is the fact that we run the risk of losing the contractors or the window we had, essentially to get paid. Not that we couldn't do it, but there's a chance we're to switch to someone else, if we go a different direction. So, again, we're not trying to force you, there's just a risk. There's unknown, with anything. If we don't do it today, we'll wait till, let's say, an August meeting.
Plants close in, you know, mid, mid-November, asphalt plants, so people are trying to get things on their calendar.
Mr. Crowe, is that based on, I guess, data?
Oh, okay.
So it'd be our recommendation to vote, but again, that's your choice, do what you feel you need to do, and we will adjust accordingly.
If there's nothing else.
Okay. Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Nope.
Thank you. Item twelve...
May I ask a question? Would we be able to have a special meeting to not have to wait until August twelfth to give Mr. Crowe some time, because it's passed? Alright, maybe that doesn't matter, because we passed some of the days, I don't know. I just hate to wait an entire month.
Well, I guess that's, that's my hesitation. I would prefer everybody to feel like they had everything, but I guess from my own personal feeling of pressing with the vote was, it sounds like we open more uncertainties than by maybe some potential risk of something we've kind of apparently done some more into, where there may be something that one of us possibly might have missed. So, I mean, y'all have come back to us before with different changes and adjustments to the GMPs and other things we had to make change requests to. I would expect that if there's something that drastically changes this, that we still have those opportunities in the change request process to manage those things, should they pop up, or should we see an issue that we would want to raise?
But to get the actual approval on the GMP, then we're gonna wait until August twelfth. Just worry about a month under the schedule. I don't know if we could do something between now and the twelfth is what I'm asking, to give people time to look at it, but at least gonna have to wait an entire month.
I guess I'm misunderstanding your question.
Since it got voted down tonight, because we had that three votes for it to pass.
Okay.
So it just got voted down.
Okay. I didn't realize what the requirement was, okay. So I suppose we could call a special in some fashion, but I'm not against that. I would prefer to try to secure the pricing and make those things happen. I didn't realize the vote requirement on that one, so.
Yeah, I, yes, we didn't specify that, I apologize.
It's okay. No worries.
Yeah, since we only have, and that was part of what we talked about last week, we'd only have the three people here.
I can be available for a special meeting?
You can make it happen.
Alright, I'll have Timmy set something up, and in the meantime, if you do have questions on that information, I would ask that you please get those to Doug as soon as possible.
Alright. Item twelve three, it's recommended the Board approve the memorandum of understanding between Delaware County Probate Juvenile Court and the Big Walnut Local School District as a means of defining the limited relationship shared with the regard of the school liaison program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you Sherri, is there a second?
Yep.
Thank you Doug.
Standard every year, this is our liaison network with students and families with attendance issues and other issues.
There's no questions, Jeremy?
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
I did have a question on that.
Okay.
It wasn't an important question, but I don't recall having a document with that before quite in, itemized as that document was. Seemed to be a lot more wordy.
I would have to look back at last year. To my recollection, it seems pretty consistent with what was in there last year.
I was just going by memory.
Yeah.
Alright.
Item twelve four, it's recommended the Board adopt the following student handbook for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the preschool grade six, the grade seven and eight, the grades nine and twelve, and the athletic. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks Sherri, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Doug. Anything on the handbook, comment wise?
I don't think I have anything new to add. You've had them for a while, and I think there's been a lot of email back and forth with, some of you've had a couple airs, appreciate that, or had some questions, so unless you have anything specific from me, I don't have anything additional to add.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item thirteen one, it's recommended the Board approve the attached supplemental contracts for the twenty-one fall athletic coaches pending receipt of background checks and completion of all required documentation. Have a motion, please.
Do you want me to do the human resources update first? I was gonna do it for Mark, so if you wanna do it consent.
I forgot about that, I was, without seeing Mark, I...
Yeah, I'm Mark tonight.
Okay, sorry.
I know, I'm not, not as pretty.
Well, I mean, I didn't see Mark, but I, I kind of blew past the human resources report, I apologize.
That way, if you wanna do a consent, we've at least talked through them. First one is just our standard approval of fall coaches. On thirteen point two, the majority of these are replacements. We do have one ad on there, I think just one of those, is for growth, and that would be the second grade teacher at BeWe, is an ad because of class size. We do have some other ones, as Mark has shared, that he's watching really closely, because they're right on the cusp of additions. The rest of those are replacements. Thirteen point three, these are resignations. I would note on that top bullet that Ben Steele, who's been a math teacher for us, is on the agenda tonight for the Delaware Career Center to be approved as the engineering teacher for the high school, and so, as you can see, that's contingent, so he'll still be in the building, but just hired through the Career Center, is one of their programs. Certainly, we, we thank everyone else on that list for their service and, and wish them well. Thirteen point four is our maintenance addition that we've had planned for quite a while, for when the two new buildings open. Obviously, we're adding a lot of square footage and a lot of acreage, so that's additional maintenance person for that. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Alright. Thank you. Sorry I jumped the gun on you.
No worries.
Thirteen one, it's recommended the Board approve the attached supplemental contracts for the twenty-two, twenty-one fall athletic coaches pending receipt of background checks and completion of all required documentation. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks Sherri, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Doug. Go ahead Jeremy.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item thirteen two, it's recommended the Board approve the following one-year certified contracts beginning in twenty-one, twenty-two school year pending receipt of successful background check, official transcripts, verification of experience, and completion of all necessary documentation for the list inclusive. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you Sherri, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Doug.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item thirteen three, it's recommended the Board accept the following resignations in the twenty-two, twenty-one school year, list inclusive. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you Sherri, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Doug.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item thirteen four, it's recommended the Board approve the change in position for Bobby Whiting from Big Walnut High School, second shift custodian to direct maintenance, district maintenance worker, step four, current contract meaning in effect August one, twenty-one. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you Sherri, a second?
Second.
Thank you Doug.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item fourteen, schedule the next board meeting. Next regularly scheduled board meeting is August twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, seven thirty AM right here, and then we'll be back here on August nineteenth for our evening meeting at six thirty. Still continuing to stream those. And item fifteen, it's recommended the Board adjourn the meeting. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you Sherri, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Doug.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.